You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 23 meeting for the Michigan City Planning Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Okay, all right, well, we will call the meeting to order now. Thank you. It's very well. So this is the September 23, 2025 meeting of the Michigan City Planning Commission, regular meeting, and I would like to ask Mr. York to please take role.
Yes. Can everybody hear me okay? Mr. Balling?
Here.
Mr. Conley is absent. Mr. Dabney?
Present.
Mr. DiMedici?
Present.
Mr. DePalma?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman is absent. Mr. Klender?
Here.
Ms. Tejetta?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Mr. Hale?
Here.
We do have a call?
Thank you. We'll proceed. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of agenda. Does anybody have questions, comments, additions to the agenda? Hearing none, can somebody motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Can you take a roll call, Mr. York?
Call for the roll. Mr. Balling?
Yes.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. DiMedici?
Aye.
Mr. DePalma?
I am abstaining as I was not there.
Okay. Mr. Klender?
Yes.
Ms. Tejetta?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. So the, so the, pardon me, agenda is approved. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Does everybody, does anybody have comments or questions about the minutes or clarifications? Hearing none, may I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
With no objections, I move that we accept the minutes of the July 22 meeting.
I second.
Do we have a roll call, Mr. York?
Absolutely. Mr. Balling?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. DiMedici?
Aye.
Mr. DePalma?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Klender?
Yes.
Ms. Tejetta?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Very well, the, so the minutes show is approved. The, that moves down to the petition P. 101-25. And, Mr. York, I, I understand that the Internet is down, but it, to the extent that you're able to give us sort of an intro from notes you have or your memory, we welcome that.
Yes, so let me read this intro. Uh, the petition tonight is P. 101-25. Shad Brennan Investing Partnership requesting to rezone from M2 to R1C. They're located at 504 Eastwood Road. Um, the, the, there's a five acre residence, and then I think there's a 15 acre chunk of land behind it. Collectively, it's about 20 acres. Basically, they want to rezone this to R1C so that they can either remodel or rebuild a structure on 15 acres. This is going to be represented by Attorney Anthony Novak is here tonight with them. Uh, I'm going to give the floor to Mr. Novak first, and then I'll read my report, if that would be okay, Mr. President.
If, if you don't mind, Mr. It is just my style. I like to ask Mr. Hale a couple questions.
Absolutely.
Welcome your input. Mr. Hale, you're used to this. As far as you concerned, have, have the petitioners complied with applicable law in submitting the petition?
I've had an opportunity to review the notice documentation supplied by the petitioner. It's in conformance with our requirements for notice, and you're free to go ahead and hear this matter and consider it.
Thank you. With Mr. Novak, I would be delighted if you took the podium.
You're the first person that's been delighted to talk to me today. But with that, Mr. President, members of the Plan Commission, my name is Anthony Novak. I'm an attorney with Newbie Lewis Kaminsky &amp; Jones in LaPorte. Here tonight on behalf of the petitioner, Shad Brennan Partnership, I have with me Leslie Shad and Joe Brennan. They are the partners in this partnership. So from a very high level, as detailed in the petition as, as Skyler indicated, we're just doing a simple rezone request tonight. Currently, the property is zone M2. We're asking for it to go to R1C. It's two parcels of land totaling 20 acres, and it's likely zoned M2 as it is just to the west of Highway 212. So right across the woods is something like Midwest Metal Products and Sandlow, and even though it is zoned M2, a mere feet across Eastwood Road, it's R1C. So a little bit of, out of our, a little bit about the background here, just in a couple minutes, you'll understand why we're making this request. So Leslie and Joe's primary focus in retirement has been restoration and preservation of natural areas. Joe himself is an active board member on the Shirley Heinz Land Trust, and Leslie was on the board of the National Wildlife Federation for almost 10 years. And in 2015, she founded and continued to lead Natural Habitat Evanston, which is a community group in Evanston, Illinois, that centers on restoring tree canopies, parks, and understerved neighborhoods, and encouraging pollinator gardens instead of turf grass. So they have a very much a environmental, you know, bleeding heart, you know, for lack of a better phrase. So Leslie indicated to me that this property here used to be known as Clark's Secret Garden for a number of years, which was a landscaping and nursery business. They saw the property, they admired the property, and eventually it came up for sale in 2014 when they decided to purchase it with the overall objection to preserve it for their children in the future and to restore the native habitat for birds and pollinators, never to develop it commercially. There's a residence and other small structures on the property, apparently constructed by Clark's Secret Garden, and Leslie and Joe thinks that they may have used one for their primary residence. They've never been in that great of shape, but Leslie and Joe have maintained them in a way to where they can at least still function as a residence. But kind of fast forward to 2024, they asked a contractor to give another estimate on making some much needed repairs, and the contractor said, "You really got to just tear this thing down." So, uh, at that time, while they didn't have current plans, they knew they didn't want to develop it commercially, and they knew they wanted to potentially build a residence on it for their family in the future. So they turned to talk to me and also talk to Skyler's department. When they would talk to Kyler and Skyler's department, he kind of gave a couple options, you know? They could leave it zoned the way it is, M2, and try to get a variance to build a new residence, or they could go a little bit more labor-intensive route and seek a rezone. I talked with Leslie and Joe. I actually kind of discouraged them from doing that only because it's hard to go from residential to commercial, and, and they might want to keep that option in the future. But they've told me time and time again, they, they don't want it to ever be zoned commercial, and they'd like it to be as natural as it possibly could. So with that, that's why they're here today. They have no exact plans except knowing that they do want to preserve its natural beauty, and they are hoping to build a residence on it in the future. So that's their request, a full rezone from M2 to R1C, and I'm here for any questions, as is Leslie or Joe. Thank you.
You know, just as a curiosity, I, I looked up, I wasn't sure that you needed to get a change of zoning to go to a less restrictive use, and, and I felt like I enlightened myself a little bit. I wouldn't mind if you kind of shared why they had to, why you would have to get a rezoning when you're going to a less restrictive use.
No, I also thought the same way, but just kind of looking at the various things that it could entail, um, I'm not sure, I'm not, I don't want to engage in a Q and A, I'm not sure you actually, it's a permitted use to build a residence in an M2 area, so I think that was one of the main things. And, you know, that's kind of why we ping ponged the ideas that we were going to do. But knowing that we wouldn't have to require a variance if we got it downzoned to R1C was the main drive, but the fact that they knew that they could actually make the property technically more restrictive?
Yes.
If it ever changes hands in the future, that actually, they actually liked knowing that.
It's, it's kind of pyramidal and hierarchical, the way our zoning code is, and most zoning codes. You have a use table. At about B2, we drop all residential use out unless you're a watchman or some other anomaly. You know, you, you have a residence, a watchman is someone who's watching over a commercial property or industrial property, sometimes they have that. But around B2, we drop all residential use out. So really, it's about a permitted use. So the other thing that's an issue is that, so say they give this to their kids later on, and they, they fix the house and the house burns down. Something happens to the house. They would have a really hard time building it back at that time, plus other, the other things that are, become restrictive. Mortgages become restrictive because you go to like the bank and they want to know, "We're investing, our mortgage is on the building, and we want to make sure that it's protected, and can I build it back? What if it burns down?" It becomes cumbersome for them to ensure that mortgage is going to stay there, if you will. That's some of the reasons why. Even with a variance, I've actually seen banks not go on variances before, even though they're basically adding a use in. I think it's just as good, but it, it could come back and become cumbersome as, as restrictions grow more on mortgages and things of that nature, and in the banking industry in general.
And, and one more point just to add, when we were entertaining the variance option, while we could probably just go in front of the VZ and ask for a variance to build a structure, I generally like to have plans on where the structure is going to be, what the setbacks might be if we need to get variances for that, and them indicating, "Look, we don't know what it would look like." It's kind of, you're, it's like a chicken and egg situation. So the rezone gave them much more options despite them having to put a little bit more effort into it.
And I agree, it does protect the land. You are protecting, you're adding a lot more protections, even if it, you've had the rezoning or the variance. So even with the variance, if they built the house there later on, so they decided, someone else bought the land and decided, "I just don't like the house, I'm just going to put an industrial property here." If, if they had children that had built a house next door, something like that, it could be kind of seen as an encroachment or not really fitting into that area, so.
So it's a legacy protection.
That's their hope. These clients actually said that they would even consider putting some sort of conservation easement in effect. I mean, it's a very noble thing that they want to do, which is the opposite of a lot of my clients in that they want to have, not, not that my clients aren't noble. But they, they actually are looking for a way to make it less commercially developed, which is, is a rare thing that you see. Everyone's got different objectives, but that's their primary objective, and I think it would, it would fit well because if you drive up and down Eastwood, it is, it's mainly wooded, it's a little residential, it's got a little bit of manufacturing in there, but it's, it's a really neat area of Michigan City that you don't really realize you're in Michigan City there.
Mr. President, would you like for me to read my, I'm sorry, did, did we answer?
You answered my question, so I wanted, I am happy for you to go forth. I wanted to see if other people had questions.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. I can read my report, it might clarify some things.
Great.
And then I can add some, some comments in at the end, if you, if you will.
Yeah.
Okay, so I apologize, first of all, I wrote a report, and it's in our OneDrive, which I was assured we always have access to, and for some reason, we don't have access to it today. So, uh, I can't give you the report, that's why I don't have it tonight. I thought the cloud would always be there. So anyways, um, this is, so I wrote it out, and I handwrote a report today. So here we go. This is a report for petition P. 101-25, rezoning of 504 and an additional 15 acres at Eastwood Road. The petitioner, Shad Brennan Partner, represented by Attorney Anthony Novak. The request, the request is a rezoning of two contiguous parcels from M2 heavy industrial, I believe that's right, M2 heavy industrial, correct? M2 heavy industrial to R1C single-family residential. Staff analysis, uh, my analysis includes that there's two parcels here of land, 20 acres totally. The current use, the current and most recent use as residential land currently taxed as such as well. To the north is M2, to the south is M2, and to the east is M2, but to the west, you have R1C, and a lot of R1C and a lot of R1B, I do believe, is out there. Those are large lot residential land. That's, that's the C and the B, that's the differences.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
West, that's across the shore.
Across the street, directly across the street is R1C residential. Uh, I would like to also point out that the north lot and the south lot are both taxed as residential use, as residential in use. In fact, I believe the north lots has a beautiful house built on it, if I'm not mistaken, is taxed as such. I'm not sure if the north, if the south lot has that, but it is being taxed as residential. Okay, according to 36-7-4-603, the planning commission will give consideration to the following. One, the comprehensive plan. Two, the current conditions and character of current structures and uses. Three, the most desirable use for the land in each district. Four, the conservation of property rights and values throughout. And five, the responsible growth and development. So what I, what I do whenever we have rezonings come forward, I go to our comprehensive plan, it's called Momentum 2040, and I pull it out, and I look at our future land use plan. This one was interesting in that I actually looked at the, uh, when we did the analysis of future land use, I looked at, um, the existing city report of what the use is, and it actually had, even then in 2018, it was being, it was labeled as residential, this whole chunk land, all 20 acres. So in the comprehensive plan, it actually calls this specific parcels, these two specific parcels, as rural undeveloped rural residential land. That's what it calls them. Uh, so, um, but, let's see here, it doesn't mention the use, but it actually talks about like it being rural residential land. That's what it is. It doesn't really have much of a classification or that, but it calls it rural residential land. So, um, in my findings, I think, in the more analysis and looking at everything around there, um, just about everything around it to the west is residentially zoned. Uh, it's actually being used residentially. I would also argue that the north and south lots have residential use in nature. Um, I would also like to include that while you may argue that we need industrially zoned land, we actually just rezoned a few years ago down in our, on 20 and 35, we, near the airport, we just rezoned 247 acres of land into M2 heavy industrial, uh, which I would argue is much better location for M2 industrial land, and that we should probably try to preserve as close to the lake as we possibly can. Uh, I think this use fits in perfectly. So I make the proposed findings. Number one, the proposed use is consistent with the future land use map. It actually is dead on for identification of what you're trying to do with it. Two, the requested change in zoning is considered, is consistent with the current character and structures and uses in the surrounding area. Three, the requested rezoning will not be injurious to the surrounding property values in the area. I might argue that it would probably improve and protect property values. Four, the area is identify, is, area identified is, the area identified is suitable for the requested rezoning and the use that you're requesting. Five, that this is not spot zoning and is consistent with adjacent zoning found in the adjacent, uh, parcels. Six, that the rezoning will promote and facilitate the development of property and the preservation of property values and uses in the adjacent area. Staff recommendation, staff has reviewed the requested rezoning and recommends approval and forwarding the request to the city council with a favorable recommendation. I will entertain any questions on that. Any questions?
Then I'm inclined to move on to public comment, and then we can take a vote.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I make a few comments?
Oh, yes, sure, I didn't mean to, yes.
I also have a report.
Will you turn the mic off?
Thank you. I have a report for petition P. 101-25. Petitioner, owner, and applicant, Shad Brennan Investing Partnership. It's, as Mr. York indicated to you, a request to rezone from M2 to R1C, so from industrial to residential use. For property at 504 Eastwood Road. As we have discovered over many such requests for change in zoning, it's not this body that actually implements the change in zoning. That is up to the common council by way of an ordinance. However, state law and our zoning ordinance require that this body, the plant commission, follow certain procedures which include having a public hearing, which we are engaged in at this very moment, following notice to the public. And then we make a determination as to whether we would pass this on to the common council with a favorable recommendation or with an unfavorable recommendation or with no recommendation. So that is ultimately what we are to do. Mr. York described for you the standards that you are to apply to this request in determining your recommendation. He indicated that you would pay reasonable regard to, and those are the words of the statute and the zoning ordinance. Those are found, as he indicated, 36-7-4-603 in section 30.07 in our zoning ordinance. So our job is to consider this, make a determination as to whether you are going to send it on to the common council with favorable, unfavorable, or no recommendation. I would indicate to you that you also have received, both by Internet and in front of you in paper form, two additional documents. One is a certification, and the other is an ordinance, a proposed ordinance for the common council. The statute and our ordinance require that we certify our results to the common council. That's the words used in those two laws. So the first document, the certification, is just your certification that you're sending it on to the common council. The second document is an ordinance in standard form that you are proposing the common council adopt. So those documents are fairly standard in the sort of language that we've used. You will have seen that language many times in the past. Finally, I would just indicate, I always like to put in my report what is included in the record, that is, the materials that you have considered in reaching your recommendation. And they include, in this case, instructions for filing the petition before the city plant commission, the petition for public hearing for rezone, signed by the applicant owner, a zoomed up or broad map of the area showing relative location of the property, a zoom map or a closer map showing the property, a third map showing zoning of nearby properties, a rather extensive written description of the project, a deed from the prior owner, Clark, to the petitioner, recorded in LaPorte County in 2014, a map showing all of the properties within 300 feet. As you know, I've had an opportunity to look at the notice documentation, and one of the requirements is that the people that own property within 300 feet are notified and write. That's been done, and we had a map to allow us to confirm. And finally, a list of the owners and addresses of properties within that 300 feet. Also included in the record would be Mr. Novak's, uh, presentation, Mr. York's report, and his presentation, and anything else that came before this body this evening. Finally, I would just state that we're required in all of our cases to adopt some sort of findings as to support your determination. Mr. York has submitted findings that would support a favorable recommendation, and they could be cited as part of a motion to approve this petition and forward it to the common council with either favorable or an unfavorable or no recommendation, and that would include approval of the certification document you have and the ordinance document. Thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Hale, do all of those items need to be detailed in that motion?
No, I think that you could make an overall motion. Uh, I think that, like all of our motions, we try to put in findings, so I would say that a motion to approve or disapprove or make no recommendation should include a reference to findings that support that. And then we could have another vote that would just approve the certification to the common council with the proposed ordinance as an attachment to that certification.
My sense is we ought to allow public comment before we make a motion, yes, just wanted to make sure. Is there public comment?
Uh, yes, this is Tommy Kalavich from 1316 Ohio Street. I think if the goal here is to preserve the, just as a wooded lot, I would maybe make a suggestion that, uh, maybe put in their will that when they pass on that they be donating to the Shirley Heinz Land Trust. I know that the city, they got, um, I have heard rumor that the city was kind of, uh, transfer the Ruby Woods to the Shirley Heinz Land Trust, and I asked, went to the park board meeting, they told me, "No, it's not Ruby Woods, it's, it's Motts Park. It's off of, it's not far from there, it's off of the boulevard. There's 60 acres there, and they're going to transfer that to the Shirley Heinz Land Trust." I know, really, they say they don't have no recreational value for the city, you know, get it out from under us, and I think that would, that would be, be a good thing for them to do with that. It's just my thoughts on it.
Hello, esteemed board. Ed L., Scott Mellon, Turin, Kenwood Place. I'd be disingenuous if I didn't speak out for their private property rights. I am a big fan of both development and private property rights. Our private property rights are one of the fundamentals in our American system. And I certainly support their goals here, without doubt. I think we probably all do. My concern would be that we'd have this, you know, reserved property surrounded by M2, and what could impact them later. I think perhaps we should look at, considering we've added the east, I don't know what we call that, extra 212 acres by the airport, I don't know what the name of that is, but since we've added 200 acres of industrial land, and this is a very nice wooded area there, when you look at a satellite view, Google Maps, it's all trees, with some residential in there already. I think we might want to look at downzoning that whole M2 pocket there to be more appropriate for larger home sites. It's a separate issue. We certainly, uh, support their view of it. I've spoken to them briefly. They, they seem like really nice people that have a really nice plan here, and I certainly hope you, uh, put forth a positive recommendation for the city council. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have one quick question here. I, um, have a little mental conflict between, um, what our petition right up here indicates about, uh, remodeling or rebuilding structures on the 15 acres, and the presentation that the fact that they weren't planning on, um, doing anything with that acreage as far as redevelopment. Am I right in, understanding that correctly?
Anthony, you want to?
Sure. Are you talking about the description maybe on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the description on the agenda might be a little misleading or inaccurate, not, not really, but the overall, there, there's structures on both parcels. There's a home on the five acre, and I think there's smaller structures on the 15. Again, no future plans, no current concrete plans, but if they did rebuild a residence, it'd probably be on those five acres. Um, I don't know what the overall objective would be on the remaining structures, there's really no intent with those. But more likely than not, there'd be a resident on the, residence on the five acres, and the other 15 wouldn't have a residence on it. So I think that the, I did read the description on the agenda as well, it looked a little, kind of caused me a question myself, but that's the overall intent.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Anybody wish to make a motion?
Sure, we'll try. I make a motion that we approve this ordinance and forward it to the common council with the certification and the ordinance to adopt, and Mr. Hale's report concerning the ordinance. And we do that with a favorable recommendation, that being petition P one oh one dash two five, to be modified by Mr. Hale, I'm sure.
Mr. Hale, does that meet the suggestion you made for a motion that you thought would be complete?
If we include everything in it, I think Mr. Clender did a pretty good job. I would just like to confirm that the motion is to approve petition P dash one zero one dash twenty-five, to forward it on to the common council with a favorable recommendation based on the findings in Mr. York's report, which you adopt, to support that recommendation, and that you forward this to the common council with the certification and the attached proposed ordinance, both of which documents you've had in front of you this evening.
So, Mr. Clender, can you amend your motion to?
Well, it was a little wordy, but I'll agree to it, yes. Thank you.
Very well. Do we have a second?
I will second that amended motion.
Can you take a roll call, Mr. York?
Yep, absolutely. Mr. Ballin?
Yes.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. DiMedici?
Aye.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Clender?
Most definitely.
Ms. Tejata?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Mr. Warner?
Aye, aye.
Well, she approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to old business, new business, discussion of the zoning ordinance amendments. And I know, Mr. York, you had a presentation to make.
Yeah, I'd really planned out a lot of different things for tonight, but it didn't work out that way. So, bear with me.
Thank you.
Yes, and we will be in contact with Anthony about the hearing and everything like that once we get it.
Thank you.
Okay. So, let me get prepared here. Okay. So, I really had a really good presentation, and I was going to give it to you, so kind of threw me for a loop here. But this is the actual presentation, I was able to get it printed out. At our next meeting, I would like for you guys to kind of digest this once I go through tonight, but at our next meeting, we do have an ordinance prepared, and then I would also, hopefully, we'll be up and running live streaming, and I would like to show this and kind of go through it again at our next meeting. But I do want to present it to you tonight and tell you what the issue is. So, we have a lot of development happening in Michigan City. You're probably well aware of that. A lot of it comes through this board. Anything from subdivisions to developments, all different kinds of things that have been coming through this board. While they're all, they're all great, I really enjoy working on them, I'm sure you guys do too. We've been overlooking for a while kind of our neighborhoods, and really looking at, what does it take to get housing back into our neighborhoods? Infill housing is what we call it. You probably hear that term a lot. It's used for a lot of different things, but really, we're looking at really true infill housing. How do we get lots that may not be conforming back into conformance? And also, how do we get houses? How do we encourage development back in there? So, as you flip through this, I would also like to say that we already have this code. It already exists in our current code. It is part of the R1C code. And when we developed that code, I helped put that code together, and it's called the Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance. The whole goal of that was to allow flexibility in some of our previously subdivided lots, but only in the R1E area, which would be the backside of the dunes, Sheridan Beach, et cetera. Mainly, it was to try to defer a lot of variances, if you will. But honestly, the goal of that preservation ordinance was always to expand it, at least I saw it that way. Because, as you'll see in here, I'm just going to kind of go through this presentation now. Michigan City, like many other cities, when we developed over time, we have a historic, call it first ring suburb. It may not be the suburbs as we think of them, but it was back in the day, it was called the suburb. You know, you didn't live downtown, you lived in that first ring. And it's your gridded street pattern, it's your forty-five by one hundred foot lots on a block, with roads, streets, sidewalks in between. All of your infrastructure is either in the alley or in the street. Keep in mind, it's already there as well. So, what's the issue? The issue is that when people come to me, I'm getting a lot of phone calls now, people want to come to me, and they want to buy a lot, they picked out a lot, it's for sale, or it was on tax sale, now they redeemed it, and they're like, I want to build a house here. What can I build? Well, it's a forty-five, or even maybe, let's say, forty foot by a hundred foot lot. Our minimum square footage is a thousand square feet. Our setbacks are twenty, and typically twenty, twenty, and like five and five on the corners, or on the sides, and I'll explain that. I have to end up telling them they got to go get a variance to do that. That really is a deterrent for people reinvesting in our downtown, and in our historic neighborhoods, and then the neighborhoods that really need investment. We don't have enough money collectively, or enough resources, not money, it's resources. The Redevelopment Commission doesn't have enough resources. There's not enough CDBG, there's not enough of these resources to get things back in order like they probably used to be. So how do we do this? Well, we need to be creating some flexible code to allow this. So, right here, why do we need flexibility? It allows investment in the form of new homes in our older neighborhoods. It creates a by right process, meaning they come to me, they meet the code, I can apply this flexibility, I can give them a permit, as long as they have all the documents that they need, as they would with any other building permit. It preserves neighborhood character. It allows smaller homes which fit into our neighborhoods, and that's a very important thing, I want them to, we want them to fit into our neighborhood. And without this flexibility, people who want to build new homes would have to basically go through the BZA process. So what are we talking about? We're talking about compatible homes. And actually, I've used this code a couple of times to get homes into block faces where we had vacant lots, and actually, I've given you one right here, that's actually a real photo in our neighborhood. We need flexible standards for R1E and R1D, and I'll explain the R1D. R1E, it already exists. What is it, what does it exist right now? It allows me to flex a setback, flex the front setback, and flex the side setbacks, and the corner setbacks, and I'll explain why those are important later. But a thing I added in is a minimum square footage of a home. Okay, so if you go to our next page, you'll see our zoning code, all of the dark yellow that you see here, and you see the gridded street pattern, probably, probably eighteen hundreds to nineteen fifty, nineteen forty-five, probably, you know, you still had this pattern of development. All that would be the R1D single family, okay? So we're only talking about putting it into R1D and R1E. I did include R1E because it's all up north of twelve, we don't have anything south of twelve. But it's traditionally your gridded street block, little lots, forty by a hundred, et So what are our current standards? An R1E, single-family residential, if you didn't have this flexibility, and an R1D, single-family, if you didn't have this flexibility, you would have to do a twenty-foot setback. A corner lot, so if you're on a corner, meaning that lot that's on that corner, it has to have a twenty, it has two, it has two front yards. It has to have a twenty-foot setback on the side yard, and a twenty-foot setback on the front yard. It basically renders a forty-five or a forty-foot lot unbuildable, without a variance, okay? The same goes for R1D, and keep in mind that the minimum square footage is still a one thousand square feet. You're still stuck with the one thousand square feet. So what are we trying to achieve here? So this is actually a block that I, I know this sounds very complicated, but it actually is not very complicated. This is how you do it. I literally am showing you how I do it, and how I've done it in the past. If you look at the top, so this is a front, I'm trying to prove right here, how do I get away from twenty feet in setback? So what I did was, I sat down, and I basically used Beacon, and I get nineteen, nineteen, twenty. There's a sixteen-foot setback in this block, there's a fifteen-foot setback in this block, and there's a fifteen-foot setback, a sixteen-foot setback, a twenty, a seven, a fourteen, and a twenty. So I average all those up, and I only use the block, I only use the parcels that have houses on it, and I end up with a sixteen-foot setback. As you can see, I have one, two, three, four, five, six vacant lots there. All six of those vacant lots can use sixteen feet for their setback. Also, what I did was, I went ahead and I did their average of square footage. And you can see, the blue boxes represent the houses. I did their square footage, it's written down below, I know it's kind of fuzzy. The new square footage there, that's sixteen-foot setbacks, would be nine hundred and five square feet. So we get a sub-one-thousand-square-foot house, and it starts fitting into our neighborhoods. The point is, is that now that house isn't setting twenty-foot back, it's setting sixteen foot up. So they've gained some square footage in their backyard, and it also allows that house to be set differently on the lot. It can go deeper into the lot, it can actually be shallower into the lot. The point is, nine hundred square feet is a little bit easier to manipulate onto a forty-seven, or a forty-five, or a forty-foot square foot lot. Also, keep in mind, all the subdivisions that you guys have seen in the past, when they were straight-up subdivisions, have been fifty to sixty-foot lots. We don't, if you were to subdivide this nowadays, you would have to do a fifty by one hundred foot lot. That's our minimum right now. A lot of cities, prior to World War II, you know, say nineteen forties, lots were forty by a hundred, or forty-five by a hundred, it encouraged density inside the inner, inside the ring, if you will. So that's an example of how the setback works. I went ahead and calculated square footage just because I was doing it. Okay, so your next point is, well, how does a house fit in? Well, this one I did, I wanted to show you how square footage works. So this is a block, and actually, this is in my neighborhood. This is in my neighborhood, and I've been kind of using my neighborhood, for example. The house I live in is about nine hundred square feet, and my setback on my corner lot is ten feet from the, from the back of sidewalk. It'd be hard for me to build my house back, is my point. So with this one, you have four lots, and they're all in the block. You may ask why I didn't use the two on the side, because they're not technically on that block, they're technically facing the side street. Each one of these houses, which are the Xs, are seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet, all three of them. So what does that allow us to do with the lot that's in the back? It allows us to average that and get seven hundred and sixty square foot house, right there. But it also allows us to do twelve foot, thirteen foot, and fifteen foot, so it gives us a new setback of thirteen feet. So we get a thirteen-foot setback, pushing the house forward, making it fit into the block face, and you get a seven hundred and sixty-eight square foot house that you can build there. That's what you're allowed by right to build, okay? Like, they came in with a seven hundred and sixty-eight square foot house, and a thirteen foot setback, and a plan, and a site plan, we can just, it goes through the permitting process. Now comes a more complicated one. How do you deal with corner lots? Well, you have a couple of things on corner lots that you're dealing with. You have a view shed triangle, or a corner lot setback triangle, corner clearance triangle, however you want to call it. Call it lots of different things. Typically, it's twenty-five foot back and twenty-five foot back. It's represented here as the triangle at the corner in green. That's your corner clearance. While I want to average setbacks and make things fit, I also don't want to get into that. I don't want to build a house in that, in that corner clearance, okay? That would be, Tim Warner would not, Engineer Warner would not like that, okay? And the reason why we don't do that is because, I know we say we have a lot of right-of-way there, but if we were to ever expand that road, put parking in, put a new sewer system in, whatever we would do, it would affect that corner more. So what I've done here is, this is actually a forty-six foot lot. It's actually a really small lot. What I'm arguing here is that, as long as you maintain ten feet between houses, and between, at the corner, you should have enough space to still fit a pretty good-sized lot. And actually, what I didn't draw is, I actually did a ten and a ten, so a ten-foot setback on the corner lot, and a ten-foot setback, or a five-foot setback in between, while still maintaining ten feet between houses, you actually get more than a thousand square foot box here to build in. Staying outside of the triangle, and you can still be at, I didn't show you on this, but I think you're still at fifteen feet with a setback here. My point is that we should be, we should be granting, ten foot should be the minimum, as long as we are keeping the twenty-five and the twenty-five for the corner clearance triangle, which is what we defined in our, in our code. Like I said, the argument here is that we're creating standards that start, so why, why are we doing this? What are the benefits? The benefits are as follows. Sustainable development. Infrastructure is already there, at location. I don't have to spend four million dollars to build a brand-new road, I don't have to spend ten million dollars to build a new infrastructure system, or a water detention system, or a sanitary line, et cetera. Actually, the saddles are probably still there, because they've already been tapped once, because there used to be a house here. That's the other point. The reuse of land without annexation, and provide more assessed value within our city, which is very important, to provide more assessed value in our city. We need to, it starts, it starts affecting our taxes in a positive way rather than a negative way. Positive, absolutely. We need to create a by right process for infill development. That way, there's no need for variances, there's a clear direction for builders, so when they come in, I don't have to explain the BZA process to them. I say, here's how your lot works, here's your average setbacks, here's how, here's your box that you can build in. It's also a faster development for new infill homes. So this is a way to get new infill homes in our historic neighborhoods around the first ring of, kind of suburban ring of neighborhoods. I would also like to say, here's a couple of other things. The alternative standards, which you'll see them in a document, are not meant to be used holistically, they're meant to be à la carte. So what do you need to make this work, right? Not all new homes require the use of all new standards. So they may only need, say they want to build a thousand square foot, they got plenty of space there, but they're in a neighborhood where the setbacks are ten feet. Well, you want, you want, they may want that ten foot, and then gain some space in the back. It allows them to do that by right, okay? The overarching goals here are to encourage reinvestment in the older neighborhoods and preserve community character. Also, another important aspect of the alternative standards is to allow flexibility, but also maintain an equitable approach to allow new homes that fit into our neighborhoods. So, what we're trying to achieve here, and that really goes to the square footage and size. I know a lot of people would argue, well, I want to live in a three hundred square foot house. While I can appreciate that, not all people want to live next door to a three hundred square foot house. And I would also say that there is a balance to what is truly a new investment versus what's there and already paying taxes. Does that, does that, does that new investment equate what everyone else in the neighborhood pays from the standpoint of the houses that are there, the square footages that are there, et cetera? I think this is a way to make things fit into our neighborhoods, but also encourage new investment into our neighborhoods as well. With that, I'll entertain any questions. I wanted to show you exactly, I've done this before, and I wanted to make sure that it wasn't, I guess when we create codes, we, they seem very cumbersome, but actually, I wrote this code in a manner that is very easy to understand what, how you do it from a planning, from a planner's standpoint. And this is literally how you would do it, how I do it, when I've done it before. I literally sat down, it takes a little bit of math, and a little bit of patience, but that's what we do as planners, that's how they train us to do, you know? So, I would say that this would be very advantageous in our east side, our west side, and I would argue even, even in some of the neighborhoods that I live in, we've had a couple of fires, and no one's built a house back, probably because the lot's like forty by a hundred foot, and it's complicated. So, with that, questions, anything of that nature, I will definitely answer.
Questions?
Skylar, I got a quick question.
Uh, Skylar, I got a quick question. Would this apply to all lots, um, whether they're narrow like 40 foot or, or even 100 foot wide lots?
Yes. And keep in mind, it's only R1E and R1D. And the reason why, uh, I chose, we, we, we do those, those, um, uh, developments, as you might've heard me earlier, when I said R1C and R1B are large lot development, you aren't going to have any issues with a large lot, right? You, you got, you got 10,000 square feet built to your heart's desire. It's really those small lots in the R1C and R, I'm sorry, R1E and R1D, which is our historic, um, uh, not historic district, but historic first ring around the city. Um, and it would plot for, it would apply to all lots. And are we going to correct every single thing? Probably not, but I guarantee you, we're probably going to correct probably 90% of those lots and be able to build on them. There's always going to be the anomaly like the 30 foot lot. I know some 30 foot lots here in the city by like 150. Okay, that's going to be a hard lot to build on, may take a variance. But, uh, most of our lots here, we don't have a lot of those lots. Um, like I said, I didn't, I, when I created this code, um, I had Tony, our GIS specialist, basically query our whole database of lot sizes and square footages. And we don't have, uh, many sub, say 35 foot lots. There's not a lot of them in the city. We also don't have a lot of sub, um, 650 square foot homes. There's not a lot of them in the city.
I have a question, Skylar. So the thousand square feet or one or 900, is that referring only to the footprint? So if there was a second level, they could double.
Actually, actually, if, if there's a second level, the way it stands right now is you can actually reduce your square footage on your footprint. We're speaking only about the footprint.
Footprint, okay.
So if you wanted to build a one story house and it averages out to 650, you could build a 650 square foot, one story house, or you could put a basement in. My house, I, I use it as an example. It's not a very big house. It's 900 square foot, but it has a basement and it could be, that could be finished. Um, I often think when I wrote this code, um, I thought about my house because if it did burn down, I, it would be, I would be have a hard, because I'm on a corner lot, I would have a hard time building back. And I'm only 15 foot off of the curb or a back of, back of sidewalk.
Thanks for the clarification.
Um, I think it's a, a way to start introduce some, some, some of our neighborhoods, uh, specifically probably post, uh, World War Two. Those houses are pretty small in some of those neighborhoods. Like think about Ohio Street, a lot of those houses are, are about 650. They, they seem bigger, but they're really not. They're about 650 to 700 square feet. Um, and some of them do have basements and, and some of them had second stories added to them as well. Good, great question. I should clarify, yes, just the footprint, not total square footage, gross square footage.
Uh, excuse me, Tyler, real quick. Uh, the reason, the reason you're going through, uh, all this math is that, so if somebody wants to rebuild a home on a lot, they don't have to request a variance.
Correct.
What, uh, is there any way that we could make our variance procedure simpler so people wouldn't be so overwhelmed by it that they could just come and ask for it and we'd say, okay?
This, this is the way to do that. It's a buy right process, like to keep them from even having to go through that variance process. Basically the house already existed and it's set 10 foot back. Why would we not let a house be built back at the same, at the same location essentially?
Can they weigh in on that? I would just note also, Mr. Clinder, that a lot of the standards that we have are set by state statute. So we wouldn't have, uh, the, the possibility of, um, granting some sort of relief on some of these cases. We could change Arizona ordinance to grant relief, but we'd still have to work within the state statute.
Good question.
I'm curious on a point and, and, and if this is off track, you'll let me know. Suppose that Jane or John Smith comes to Michigan City says, I'd like to buy three of these lots and build a gargantuan home. Does what you spoke today impact upon that request?
If you bought three lots, you're really not going to be, you have plenty of space. I guess if you wanted to use the setback relief, yes, you could. It might make it fit more into the character of the neighborhood, but really you're going to end up with, say, 7,500 square foot of, of a block. You probably don't need a square footage reduction, I guess.
Sure, that makes sense. So here's probably a more grounded question. It sounds like one of the positive byproducts of what you're proposing is that you get a certain standardization and it, and it's like maybe better aesthetics, more consistent aesthetics for the block. Is that a fair vista?
100% fair vista, absolutely. Um, um, it, it starts building back the neighborhoods that, that, that were there, if you will. Um, I feel like we've standardized, um, we've standardized our neighbor, uh, the zoning code to a point where it's actually become cumbersome to build back into historic neighborhoods. Um, we've said, you gotta have 20 and 20 and 20 and five, you know? And it's like, it just doesn't work that way. It, 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 on a 40 by 100 foot lot, even that standard is pretty tough on a 40 by 100 foot lot, just being really honest. Um, and I think also from the outward, uh, from a person that was trying to buy a lot and invest in our city, I, I think this would make it a little bit more, uh, easy for them to come to us and approach us, uh, when we could offer flexibility. Cause I really hate telling people that they gotta go get a variance to build back their brand new house in, uh, a neighborhood that really could use a new house.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
So I came up, um, to be also supportive to Skylar. So Wendy Vasche, the Public Works Director, I want to say just briefly that, um, to me, this is progress. It seems very small compared to some of the things that y'all have dealt with in the months that I have been here. Um, but we've been talking about this since I came on board. Um, we just had lots of other things going on. So it's nice to get back, uh, to some of what I'll call the bread and butter of making sure that Michigan City is affordable and people can come and invest. And some people do want a 3,000 foot house. That's what the big lots are for. And we have a lot of requests for smaller homes and we're just not able to, um, accommodate that. When I sat through, um, I was at the American Planning Association Conference in Philadelphia in 2023, this subject was all over the place. It is not just us. So many communities are trying to build themselves back, use their existing infrastructure and to do it sustainably. And this is what, this is what they're doing as well. Um, it also saves us on staff time, if I can be honest. Um, the more buy right that we have with flexibility that makes sense, um, the less staff time it takes and the less staff time it takes to go through a variance. So obviously the variance process is there and we will commit the time, but if you don't need it, why do it? You know, make it for the larger projects or the things that are more complex and y'all have dealt with plenty of complexity. So I think this also really helps. We get a lot of concern from neighbors, folks who have been, some people who have lived in their house 50, 60 years saying, what's happening to my neighborhood? What's going to happen when somebody wants to build the mega house next to me? I'm now going to be priced out of my neighborhood. To me, I think this goes a long way into that affordable category, attainable. We can say a lot of terms here, but it makes this doable for a lot of folks and offers a different way to build houses. And that is what sustainability, um, is about. And in fact, we mentioned this at the sustainability workshop that we had last month. So it's nice to be able to put into practice also what we said we were going to do and to follow up. So thank you for the time. I just, I did want to support Skylar because I have been talking about this and pressing and pressing and pressing. And he took the time, uh, to do it and to do it right. And I'd like to say too, that by having this kind of flexibility in the code, we can have junior planners come on board, train junior planners to be able to do this work. And that also helps with our capacity. So thank you for the consideration and thank you to Skylar, um, for taking the time to do this because this is just as meaningful as the big PUDs and some of the other things that you've done, like stormwater. This isn't nearly as cumbersome, huh? A little bit easier. So thank you.
Any, any other questions? I, I know it sounds, it's a lot. I'm sorry I dumped it on you like that. I really had this great presentation, so I really wanted to show it. But, um, I, I would like to, um, bring the ordinance to you. I want you to take it and consider it, but I will go through, um, when we're digitized again, uh, I would, I'll go through this again next month for the, for the public to see, um, and kind of see how I, how, how it all works and how it all goes together, fits together. Um, and I do have people right now who are building back houses in neighborhoods. Um, I can think of three right now, brand new houses. And honestly, um, the, these ones that they built back, uh, they fit. Uh, we had to work with them on a couple of them, but it, but in all reality, if they had had this flexibility, um, probably could have give a, built a little bit, maybe, but I won't say a better home because a new home is good. Um, built, built in a different manner, maybe built something that fit in a little bit better, if you will. Not that they aren't nice.
And excuse me, and the reason they didn't do that is because they didn't want to come to us for a variance.
They just wanted a buy right. They, they want to build and they don't want to go through that process. It's cumbersome.
Amen.
Public comment on this?
Uh, yes, Tommy Kalovic, 1360 in Ohio. I was trying to, Skylar just mentioned tax sales, county's going to have another one October, October the 4th, 10 AM, the fairgrounds. He's pre-registered at the SRI site. They probably got a list of 300 properties right here in Michigan City. They might buy me one. I said, you know, it's a good place. I might get yourself an open lot, put a picnic shelter and place it on there. You can have a place for your family to go and have their barbecues and picnics, very Michigan City thing for us to have a place for your children to play, go play, you know, keep them all out of my yard. You know, maybe, maybe get a fixer upper, maybe put one up for, you know, that grown adult you're trying to get out of the house, you know? You want to be Ray Ray's house, the other be Tay Tay's house. I was, I don't do questions and answers. Maybe you can ask it. Are you going to let us start building tiny houses? It's, it's one thing I want to throw out there. Thanks.
Scott Melanture in Keweenaw Place. I want to sincerely thank Skylar. This is, this is the most sensible, this is about the most sensible thing I have ever heard come out of a government official's mouth in my life.
Appreciate it.
Quite honestly, this is fantastic, good development. I would point out.
I've told you before.
Like I said, sensible. I'll point out, I know you're talking about the inner ring suburbs, uh, but I point out the standard Chicago lot is 25 by 125, which is 3125 square feet. You end up with 18 and a half foot wide houses is effectively what you get. But that has served millions and millions of people over the decades. Um, I'd have a, a couple of questions. You know, how many parcels are affected by this? I think that's a positive thing. Um, I would point out that variances are subject to denial. So you put uncertainty in things, into things. To have, uh, matter of right is a far stronger private property thing. And I support this full, full, wholeheartedly. Um, I would also point out those post world war, those post World War Two houses that were built in Skylar's neighborhood. My mother-in-law lives in that neighborhood. My nephew lives in the neighborhood, in that neighborhood. I bought three houses in that neighborhood. You'd have, uh, a 900 square foot, three bedroom, one bath that raised a family of six to eight or 10. You know, this minimum size, I think I heard 1,200 square feet is the current, 1,000? We shouldn't have that frankly. Uh, maybe it's 750 or 800, but this is a great, this is great that this opens up so many things. This is, we call it infill when it's housing, but this is brownfield development, infill housing. We have all the supporting infrastructure there. We want to encourage building, new development, and we don't need today's average of 2,250 to 2,400 square feet houses to do that. People have lived for decades in much smaller places. And with affordability being the way it is, being able to build smaller homes that meet the standard of maybe a retired single person or a retired couple, that's easier to care for, cheaper to maintain, cheaper to build, um, but gets it back on the tax roll is a very powerful thing. This is really sensible stuff. And if we have anybody combining three lots to build a mega home, I would say that's a good problem to have. I mean, you see that in Lincoln Park, but, uh, I don't think we've seen it. Um, and one last thing, if, if even of these, if even these expanded setback rules lead to a small footprint, say 650 square feet or 600 square feet, I think as a matter of right, that should be allowed on that lot. Not that we have some artificial barrier of 900 square feet and you don't meet it. It, it should be, if the lot doesn't support it, we should allow what is buildable on that lot, in my opinion. But again, Skylar, fantastic work. I look forward to seeing your presentation, but this is really sensible, smart, smart planning and it really is amongst the best thing I've ever heard out of a government officials mouth. Thank you, Skylar.
I, I will add too, that not only do we get another house on our tax rolls, we get another customer for our water system without modifying our water system and another customer for our sanitary sewer systems without having to modify the sewers. So it's a win-win all the way around.
You did ask how many lots, uh, there, there are literally hundreds of lots, but I can, I can probably get you some, some numbers on that by the next time. Um, I've been working on this code for about two years now. Uh, once Wendy came aboard, I kind of told her a little bit about it and she's like, this is great. I, I've given a lot of thought, just so you know, I've given a lot of thought about this and, and it really is, uh, to quote, it's a sensible way to do this and we really need flexibility in our, um, in our older neighborhoods to get houses back. I live there, many people live in those neighborhoods. Um, and like I said, there's not enough resources for us to put stuff back into these neighborhoods. We, we may build two, two or three houses, but we're not going to build a lot of houses. And, and right now we are getting requests for people to build houses in neighborhoods. So, um, now is the time and, um, we, we may only have a short period of time that people are looking to do this. So that's kind of why I'm bringing it forward and, uh, I think I've tweaked it out enough and thought about it enough. Uh, and I'd like to give to you, um, uh, this week and let you, let you have the ordinance as well. And then, um, and maybe at our next meeting, uh, ask you if we can forward it on to the city council for that, so.
Any further comments? I'm prepared to, um, entertain it. Go ahead, Mr. York.
I would also say, um, before we go, um, uh, Ms. Vasche would also, so we've been going through a lot of growing pains and, um, Ms. Vasche would also like to talk to you about a couple of other things we would like to bring to you very quickly. Um, not to belabor anything, but, um, please give her the time to, to talk about some other issues we've been dealing with and trying to figure out.
It's kind of a theme, um, as we're able to take a breath from some of the larger projects and start to really look at the code and making solutions. And the minute you do one, you just get several. Um, I like this approach. Um, feedback is always welcome. I'd like to give you the opportunity to present this as information only before we ask you to vote on it. Um, trying some different things, including presentations that make things more digestible and are available to the public. We, we will have that. Um, so we're trying new things, but along with this, we'll be bringing some other code updates to you in the coming months. Um, particularly, um, in the landscape ordinance, uh, the tree protection, um, code, um, that is in there. Um, I think it was prepared in 2018, um, with good intentions. I don't know if anybody was around then, but, uh, with good intentions. It just wasn't something that had really come into play very much because we hadn't had the development that would trigger that part of the code. Um, and indeed we have had development now that has triggered that part of the code. And I myself have worked through two different scenarios using the code and I can tell you it needs to be tweaked. Um, well intended, it just doesn't come out in the wash very well. So wanted to give you a heads up that will be coming next month with those changes. We will also, I will also speak with the tree board, um, as a courtesy and because we want their input. Preserving trees is very important, but we also need development and we need to have code that makes sense. And if it's taking me a month to work through it, um, it's going to, a junior planner cannot do this. Um, and we have a great new city forester, um, who is completely on board and have been coordinating with him and getting some better ideas. So wanted to give you a preview, uh, if you will, um, on that. Uh, the other thing that will be coming your way as we begin to, to work on this is transit oriented development and transit development districts. We need to update our code to accommodate this fantastic double track project. Um, and all of these, you can see where they're starting to nest. These things are building upon each other. So just wanted to give you a preview into those. Um, at some point I'll be tackling the building code as well, but we'll get to that one later. Um, but these things will be coming your way and we look forward to presenting them to you as info to give you more time, um, so that you can digest and hopefully be supportive or give us ideas about how we can do it better. or give us ideas about how we can do it better. But I just, I've been on board for seven months, and I do want to say this. I am very appreciative and cannot tell you how much I respect all of the work that you have done in the seven months I've been here. Y'all have tackled some really big things. So we're gonna, we're gonna get some smaller things, uh, your way, that have just as much meaning, uh, for the people of Michigan City. And so it's nice to be able to take this time and to do this work. And if you have other ideas or things that you think need to be looked at, if you'll let us know, we'll get them on the list, and we'll do that. So that's all, really all I had to say. We just want to make sure you're getting a preview of what's to come, uh, in the next few months. And, and thank you again for your time and your diligence, it really does matter.
Real quick, do we have any codes or restrictions or rules and regulations on maintaining of properties? You know, either lawns, uh, the exterior of buildings, et cetera?
Yes, we do.
We need to work on that.
Yes, we do, and I'm glad you mentioned it. So, um, that is one of the things that I have, um, taken on as well, to help the Code Enforcement Department, and working with DeMarcus, our new code enforcement manager, as well as the Planning Department, Inspection Department. We've all been talking about this quite a bit, and working with the unsafe building law that we have, which is incredibly powerful. I don't think people understand how powerful that code is. And we can do a lot, and we can do more. So more to follow, and you'll begin, I'll make sure you get those updates as well.
I want to be, be very clear, Fred, that's not part of the zoning code. That is part of code enforcement, though, yes.
But I'll make sure you get an update, how about that? You'll hear about it too. That way, you're, you can be aware of the other things that we're doing, because it's good information, and you probably get questions about these things.
Okay, now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Thank you, the meeting's adjourned, thank you.